Good evening. It is Tuesday, September 6th. It is 5:00 PM. We have a full council dius, and I'm calling this meeting to order, and I will turn things over to Chair Dickey to call his board to order.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Visit Bastrop Board of Directors will hold its annual joint city council meeting on...today. Somebody give me the date.
September 6th.
Tuesday, September 6th. Sorry, it all rolls together. At 5 o'clock PM at Bastrop City Council, Visit Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order business at any time prior to the adjournment.
So you need to call it to order.
For Visit Bastrop Board of Directors, this meeting is called to order.
Excellent. Thank you. Council, we're moving over to page 2. We have citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. We are moving on to our work session. Item 3A, review the city's contract with Visit Bastrop dated November 29th, 2021, regarding scope of service and deliverables. It is time for our annual meeting, and I turn it over to Visit Bastrop.
Yes, thank you. Is that on? Okay, great. Okay, I'd like to introduce you to our Visit Bastrop team for some of the newer council members. This is in much younger days. And I know my mom is watching, and I just want to know if she caught my bangs, or did somebody else do that?
And was Scotch tape involved?
I think there was Scotch tape involved. Anyway, Kristi Hahn is our marketing coordinator. She's here with us tonight. Cherry Kay Abel, our director of sales. Ashton, our director of marketing, and myself. I also want to introduce our...oh, and we have a new...is she here? Oh, there she is. We have a new employee, starting on Monday. And she's right back here, and her name is Stephanie Dora Deah, and she will be a support specialist with Visit Bastrop. So we're very excited to have her join in. All right, and we have our Board of Directors. Just to remind everybody, the Board is a group of volunteers that represent various industry segments. And new this year to our Board from last year is Carrie Fossler. Everyone knows Carrie. And see, the new ones, Jane Hunt is here this evening, Dan Gilkinson, and Amy Bailey, and Dr. Kristi Lee. Also on the Board is Jamie Creasy, who's been with us for a few years, Sean Pletch, and Becky Wumble, and Kathy Danielson is our ex officio, and of course Keith Spindon with the Hyatt. So we're very blessed to have a really good Board of Directors. Next is our mission and our vision. Basically, we encourage travel to the city of Bastrop through leisure travelers, meeting planners, and anybody else we can grab to come on in. So it's basically, to boil it down, our mission and our vision is to create a great community and have a good experience and bring those visitors in to affect our economic impact in the area. So our Visit Bastrop role, again, is to attract visitors to our community. We all know that visitor spending enhances the local community. We lead and coordinate a management of elements that make up the destination for our visitors. So the scope of services in the next three slides, this is how our work is defined. This comes from the city agreement. And it's basically, you ask us to do this, we do it. We come to you once a year to tell you how we're going to do what you ask us to do. So that's our first set of scope of services. And then the next set is continued. And as I said, those scope of services are aligned clearly with our deliverables. And this is sort of condensed. Our business plan, deliverables. As we move forward in this presentation, we will outline the methodology and the tactics to deliver on the scope and the deliverables. All right, our foundation. This is how we breathe and live through those deliverables. So, a well-defined brand foundation is a fundamental part of our strategic infrastructure. It's the foundation on which our company's unique values and benefits are built. It's the foundation that defines why a prospect should consider our brand over others and sets an expectation of value in their minds. Our foundation is made up of our voice and tone, our brand value, pillars, our position, and our promise. Our campaign that we're currently running is our Welcome to It All campaign. This is the first campaign that we launched after our initial branding. This is our fifth year of implementation of that brand. It basically is geared toward showcasing the diversity of our environment, our landscape, and the customizable experiences that we have to offer.
Our vision to our future are our goals. It's to drive visitation, leverage our marketing and business intelligence, and position Bastrop as a perfect meeting and travel destination. We also want to advocate for our partners and communicate that intelligence to our stakeholders and our assets. Okay, so we have three audiences, the leisure traveler, the meeting planner, and the local community. And our planning occurs from the standpoint of these audiences, these three different audiences. So that's what we will go over next. So the methodology for the leisure traveler is, again, we will utilize leisure travel marketing. Our objectives, goals, and strategies and tactics support all of our overarching strategies.
And like Susan mentioned, she talked about some of the methodologies. These are the bullet-pointed tactics that we use to execute in the leisure lane. Visitbastrop.com is our number-one marketing resource. We work with a search engine marketing team, Google paid search to ensure that Visit Bastrop remains the ranking authority on search engine result pages for visitor-related information. I also want to call out our visitor's guide. We distribute 15,000 guides annually to Houston, technically Galveston, because that's where Houstonians go to play, and then also San Antonio. And then we bring in-house 10,000 guides that we distribute locally to our accommodations, to any other hospitality businesses.
All right, the meeting planner audience, it's a much different audience, much different methodology. We use some of the same tactics to reach those goals and then to reach the subsequent economic impact. I think one of the bigger things is we are just expanding our awareness among destination partners and engaged leads, through our leads, and also working with the actual meeting planner, which can be an individual and/or a company.
All right, and moving into some of those tactics that support the methodology, this slide details all of the sales, marketing, and partnership tactics we use to engage our meeting planners. I did want to call out that we, you know, we mentioned that we attend industry meetings. The Visit Bastrop team just came back last week from TACDB, which is the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus. We just went to their annual conference. And that's where our team stays up to date on anything related to our industry trends, anything related to meetings and groups. So I just wanted to call out those two things. And then another thing I wanted to mention is our visitor's guide. So our visitor's guide is twofold. It serves our visitor and both our meeting planner. So it's a very robust resource. You never know who's coming into town with their kids for the weekend, but also might be planning a big conference in six months. So packaging that in a way to where it hits both of those audience in one fail swoop is a win.
Another audience for us is our local community. It's not only our job to work with planners and leisure travelers. We also want to recognize our community as an important audience. The people that live here have lives of their own, and our visitors are coming in and coming into their lives. Because of that, we want to make sure that tourism creates a positive experience for the local as well as the visitor, because we do know that tourism creates a ripple effect wherever people come and when people come to stay and so on. So for this to happen, tourism and development and communication must be rooted and be a real strong priority in our community, which is something that we are going to continue to focus on in this coming year.
And then some of the tactics that support some of those methodologies. This slide really is all about collaboration, communication, and partnerships, having a seat at the table, at all tables amongst our community stakeholders. The museum is a big one, the Opera House, and the Los Pines Art Center. So our people are a big part of our brand and our foundation. So it's important that we engage them in such a way.
Before I go on to sort of the next set, is there any questions? No, all good. Okay. Thought leadership is another deliverable in our business plan. It's basically, it's the expression of ideas that demonstrate our expertise as a DMO. And, you know, we are credible. We have a unique guidance and motivation. We're forward-thinking, reliable source of insight and information to help influence others. So we like to consider ourselves a thought leader in the community. Three trends that recently came out of the U.S. Travel Association's annual meeting is the future of travel, the evolution of work, and rethinking happiness. So regarding our competition, we need to make sure that we're focusing in on those three things. You'll hear more about rethinking happiness, which is basically, the visitor experience is very important right now. So they want to have a real positive experience while they are here. The future of travel, obviously, and then the evolution of the workplace and working from home. So those are our key competitive advantages that we want to take. We want to make sure we're following them in the upcoming year. And then in the leisure market, interesting, Jamie Creasy, I'm sure, will be happy to see this, that there's a 500% increase in camping bookings in 2021. This is across the United States. And 80% of people traveling now are looking for sustainable accommodations. As, again, we've talked many times, Bastrop is...couldn't be more well-suited to sustainable travel, to outdoor travel, and all of the economic trends that we see. Eco-travel and outdoors are still in, coming back to sustainability. So the customer experience, again, being the most important than ever. People aren't satisfying...being satisfied with just popping in and popping out. They want to have a good experience while they're there.
Did I go the wrong way? Says leisure. Yep, sorry. Okay, nope. Should be meeting trends and intelligence.
That should say meeting trends and intelligence at the top. It says leisure trends. Sorry about that. So there's six meeting and event trends for 2023. One really cool one that we're...what we're actually seeing is virtual reality, you know, like the headsets, and you put them on. And so, meeting planners can now, or will be able to, put those headsets on and be able to see a space, be able to see a hotel, an accommodation, and be able to walk around without having to leave their desk for a site visit. Site visits aren't gone for sure, but this is a trend that we're starting to see in the industry. Social activism, it's not...the meeting planners aren't really looking just for the demographics of their group, but also in their group. It's called...they're looking for, what are the...what's the value graphic of our attendees? So they're looking at it as more of a holistic way of looking at their attendees and what's important to them when they come to an area, and what does that area offer to them.
Okay, I'm going to show my ignorance. I don't know what a value graphic is.
It's a new word. I would like to tell you, I just made it up, but I didn't. It's basically what's...instead of a demographic, it's like, what's value...what's a value graphic to the attendee? It's just a play on words. Do you want me to make up something else? All right, our comp set. It's always important to see what's happening and who we need to watch, who the new kids are in town. Keith Spindon, I'm sure, could speak much more creatively about the comp set that's out there, since probably most of these affect his hotel. However, we still try to keep an eye on what's going on in the industry. I'm glad that you have your books in front of you so you can see this, but this is taken from the Governor's Travel and Texas Research Site, which was last updated on April 2022. This is the impact of tourism down to the city level. So this is the city of Bastrop. So if you take a look at the direct travel spending, it's a 28.67% year-over-year. The highest was in 2011. It saw a 34.1% year-over-year. So you can see how the industry is coming back from the heyday of 2011, pretty much all the way through all four of those graphs. Employment hasn't bounced back quite from 2011 yet, but it is up slightly, 7.5% year-over-year. And then direct earnings, this is the wage and salary dispersments and earned benefits, is up 18.1% year-over-year. The last jump after 2011 was 2014, where the earnings jumped to 18.99. Tax receipts, which is near and dear to our hearts, exceeded 2011's, so we did exceed in one area, by 27.29%, and local tax receipts, that breaks out to 1.4 million in local tax and 2.2 million in state tax. So you can see the impact that tourism has right at our city level. Any questions? Okay.
All right, moving right along. Okay, so we talked about methodology, we talked about tactics. Now we talk about how our KPIs, our key performance indicators, to make sure that we're reaching our goals. In some worlds, it's as easy as selling a product, tracking that conversion, and that's your KPI. Did we sell what we said we were going to sell? When you're selling an experience, it's a little bit different. So we use a lot of different KPIs to measure if we're actually doing a good job of what we do. So this is a review from last year, or from this year's efforts. The two columns that I think you'll want to pay most attention to are the two center columns. And we give you that 2020-21 actual, and then the goals for this year to give you that baseline. So 21-22 goals is that second column on the left. And then the actuals year-to-date are where we are to date. And just want to call out, too, that these numbers are not for the full fiscal year, since we're reporting before the fiscal year is over. These numbers are through July 31st. So if you see something that's not yet met its goal, it's well on its way. And for just easy reading, I marked the items that have already met their goal in green. So we monitor our PR pitches and our media alerts. This is a public relations initiative, and so we always want to be talking more year-over-year about the things that we're doing. So we did about 79 pitches in '20 and '21. We said we were going to do 12% more than that. We're about...we're on our way there. I'm assuming within these next two months, we'll get to that goal. Same with press releases. Our website, our biggest asset, you know, like I said, those two top columns, everything looks good. Organic traffic, by the time we make it to the end of the year, fiscal year, we will have met that goal, too. Repeat visitors, blog traffic, and visitor's guides. Again, the top two have already met their goals for the year. And then our visitor guide distribution, that's a flat projection. We pay a certain fee to produce a certain amount of guides, and unless we invest in that year-over-year, it's just kind of a, we print 25, we give out 25,000. So we've distributed close to 20,000 this year, and in the next two months, I imagine, we'll get the rest of those handed out. Social media, Facebook engagements and Instagram followers. Engagement is king. We can count followers, but if your followers aren't engaged, it's not really...what are followers if they're not following and engaged? Facebook engagement, we may not meet this goal this year, and that is because in the previous year, we had some paid advertisement supporting that that we didn't invest in this year. So that 36,000 was based off of a social campaign that we had last year that we probably will not do again this year. And then Instagram followers, we've met that mark.
What was the paid advertisement last year?
We did a summer campaign at the end of the year, and it was a paid social campaign where we put up ads and we feed them to our friends that follow our page, and then friends of friends. And then we can also target based on geography. So we target our feeder markets, and we basically...it's a visibility and an awareness campaign. So the goal is to get as many impressions as you can on those.
So I would assume that that was a part of, like, COVID...
Yes, recovery, get out.
Recover, get out, get on. So was there a...do you feel like that was a good investment? And so, or...but it was very time-oriented, and so that's why you didn't do it again?
It was like a one-off. We didn't have it in our plan for last year, but as we kind of adjusted through the pandemic, we thought, you know, a lot of places were just sitting back and just being quiet and trying to figure out what they were doing. But we are in a perfect position, especially during COVID, to get people out and about and outdoors. We had a lot of safe offerings. And so we, in the moment, even though we didn't budget for it, we keep a retainer of money that we can do stuff like that with. And so we picked that up last year. It was a very successful campaign. There was a lot of chatter, given the time of the year it was and with everything that was going on. So we feel like it served its purpose, but we just don't see a need to do anything like that this year.
I very much appreciate that. It's one thing to...we don't want you spending hot tax dollars because it was on a list someplace that you were going to spend it. I mean, looking at the payback, and particularly, it sounds like it was very time-sensitive and very specific. So I just...I assumed that's what it was, but I didn't want to make that...
It was, and it had a very targeted focus, too. It was about getting outside.
So that's one of the tools that...and hopefully, it's not that particular situation, but that's a tool that you guys would use if there was another situation that you thought that might bring you the engagements that you're looking for.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions on these number slides so far? Okay, wonderful. All right, the last one is...
Ashton, I would say that specific campaign led to the 500% increase in camping in the United States. That was our part.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the last marketing slide is our e-newsletter opt-ins. We do a bi-monthly leisure and meeting newsletter. One, we're talking about meetings; the next month, we're talking about leisure offerings. And we always do really well. Kristi heads up this front in our e-newsletters. So open rate exceeds the industry average, and that's the benchmark, really. It's just to make sure that people are opening it and clicking around and looking interested.
So the sales results are a little bit different and much easier to count, if you will. These are the number of definite contracts that we brought in to the area hotels. So Cherry Kay, working with the meeting planner audience that I mentioned earlier, this year has brought in 32 definite contracts. Now, that doesn't mean, I always say this, it doesn't mean that those 32 are happening this year. We tend to book a year to two to three years out, but we count it in the year that it happens. So our actuals...sorry, goals, I'm sorry, were 32. Our actuals year-to-date are 41, so we've already exceeded that goal. The new goals that we've set for next year, at this point, are at 55. I'll be reviewing those again before the end, before October 1st. Definite room nights, our actuals are 12.7. Our goal was 7,500. She's knocking it out of the park. And the convention center, this is a new one for us this year. Paul...Mr. Hoffman had asked us to put more of an effort towards the convention center. We did. We set some sort of baseline goals, because we had really no idea what we were looking at in terms of possible sales there because of the situation of it's booked all the time. So what can we...what can we actually contribute to that? And so we just set some very minimal goals there, and which we had eight goals for the year. We've already booked 13, and I know she's still booking more. So the only issue we have with that is we just don't have enough dates available. So, which can be a good thing.
Those definite room nights occur...those are actual room nights during the calendar year?
No.
They are the room nights associated with the events?
With each one of the definite, right.
So their timing on that can be...it varies?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. And if an event is coming for more than one or two or three years, that's included in there as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Just to clarify, you said you count it when you book it, or you count it when they actually hit tail?
No, we count it when we book it.
I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and then our economic impact. So it boils down to, when these groups come in town, they spend money. They spend money in lodging, transportation, food and beverage, retail, recreation, and business services. We have an economic impact calculator that we utilize. We input the data that we know from the meeting. We do pre and post. So they said, this is what they told us they were going to do, and this is what they actually did. So this would be all post-economic impact. And so for this fiscal year alone, it was 8.7 million. You can see the bounce back from COVID, from 2.9 million. And then last year was 4.3.
So on the pre and post, is it...Mayor Protem Rogers and I say that we're going to have this big old party, and everybody's going to want to come, and we think it's 400 rooms, that would be the pre. And then the post is, really, only 275 people showed up. So that...I would assume that's the difference.
That's the difference, as well as the number of attendees. So not just people...
Not just nights?
Exactly. Not just room nights, but also how many people were here, and if they had people that ended up flying in, that weren't going to fly in, so we'd have an aviation impact. So all of those are taken in. The top three categories that the EIC measures, or the top three categories are lodging, food and beverage, and retail, out of the other categories, out of the total business sales that we measure.
So aviation's farther down the list?
It's not even on there. It's just, it's a component of the...it's a component of the calculation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I know we're talking about what we're going to do in the future. That's what this meeting is all about. I just wanted to take an opportunity to, just for the newer council members, is to share with you the 75,000 hot event fund that we get from the city. This just is the pass-through in our budget. We keep it completely separate. I just wanted to show you what's been done this year, and just so you have an idea of how that money is spent. So you'll also notice on the far right, we have, whether it's an actual economic impact, or if it's still in the pre-stages. So Corvette Invasion's final report, I believe, is due on the 17th. So once I get that from them, then we will go in and plug in the real numbers. And just so you know, as an FYI, when we say plug in the real numbers, we do...we talk to our hoteliers, and we say, how many people did you book? Did you have a coupon code? So we have a little bit more realistic numbers than them saying, oh, I think we're going to have 4,000 room nights. So we can get a much more realistic number in the end. So these are the groups that we funded this past year, and their economic impacts, the amount we awarded them. We did start the year with about an $18,000... Where's that number, Ashton?
Which is why your number's over 75 is where you're going, right?
18.3 is what's up there. It's on your paper.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see it. 18.3 is...we came in...we didn't award all the money last year. So we just carry it over into the next year. So that's why it's a little higher than 75,000. We're going to end this year with $346. So that'll just carry over into next year. Now, in the event, we run out of money because we have so many qualified events, and we have another qualified event that comes in, I feel that it would be my responsibility to come back to council and say, oh, by the way, we have this great opportunity for this event. Here's what their EIC is showing. Here's, you know, all the details about it. Would you be willing to put more money into this fund to help get this event here? So we have not had that happen in four years. But in the event that it does, that's always been my plan.
Absolutely. And council, I want to remind you that when this first started, council had the 75,000, and we would, one time a year, pick the events. And we did not have an EIC calculator. And so we would make a decision, and whenever we're involved in decisions, they get political, because we're politicians. And one of the things that politically we decided was that with these hot tax dollars, it made way more sense to let professionals make a decision, and more importantly, be able to respond in a timely manner and have a consistency with how people were being evaluated. So I am really glad that we aren't the ones that are like anybody who thinks they're going to want to run. We were giving money to 5Ks that didn't have 200 people coming to them, you know. So this is just such a phenomenal improvement, and it's just awesome to have this kind of data available. Thank you very much. And you're exactly right. You would come, ask for additional money. You would work through the city manager, and Tracy Waldron would bring us a budget amendment, and that's how that would get handled. Mayor Protem Rogers?
On that same fact, I understand that you had the 18,000 left over.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the events that you gave it to, do you feel confident enough that you would have came for us, came to us for that... have came for us, came to us for that extra 18,000, if you wouldn't have had it?
I, yeah, this is a pretty solid lineup, if you will. Yes, I do believe so.
Good. I just, I want to make sure you feel confident, because I do want you to come to us when we have these big events.
And we say no, also.
Oh, I know you do. I know there's a lot of ask. So I just want to make sure you feel the confidence that you need to-
Yes, ma'am.
-to get that. Thank you.
Great job. Just phenomenal job.
All right, so when we do a good job, we want to communicate that success, right? So we wanted to with you how we communicate those successes as an organization. So, I mean, you've seen our partner reports, board meetings, newsletters, contributing article with the Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber luncheon that we had, that was fantastic. The government affair meetings, community asset meetings, and so on. So we're involved in the community, and this is how we share our success, and we also get our partners to join in with us. Focus areas. Okay, so we, we have our three audiences that we spoke about, and we have our KPIs that we spoke about. We also have some things that we will be continuing along this year, some special projects, or I like to call it a focus area, that we feel is to the advantage of the community and to the visitor. So we'll be talking about those, and then we have a couple of new ones that we will be rolling out this year as well.
That looks like Carrie Fossler.
It is. I'm writing it down. It's Carrie Fossler.
Is it you?
No. Okay, so one of those focus areas is our partnership with the city, specifically the downtown Bastrop microsite. Downtown is one of our pillars. It's been established through our, our brand initiative. And so with that, you know, downtown gets a pretty big call-out on the top of our website. So we've been working with Rebecca Gleason and their team to migrate all of what used to be downtownbastrop.com, and migrating all of that information to the Visit Bastrop platform. And I think one of the biggest wins with that is it will increase the awareness of these offerings by almost 271%. So it's a lot more visibility for the downtown area and the things that it has going on. And so we are in the final stages. The frame has been built, and we're just really reorganizing internally to make sure that the SIPs fall under the SIPs, and the shops fall under the shop. And so just a little internal organization going on. That should be ready to roll before Lost Pines Christmas is. So we will use the downtown microsite to host all of the Lost Pines Christmas information this year. And I also put a little screenshot down on the bottom. One, one thing I do all the time is search keywords in Google to see how we're populating. And so downtown does populate number one on Google search engine for the Visit Bastrop profile. So that's always music to my ears. Also, the convention center landing page, this, this is something we worked on last year. We have a robust landing page on our website that talks about the services and all the offerings, all of the pertinent contact information, floor plans, the brochure that we just printed is all housed on one landing page related to the convention center. And that's also got some pretty high visibility under meetings in our secondary nav on our website. Just with no real active promotion, just is living organically, it's received about 3,000 sessions this fiscal year. So it's a baseline. E-cabs, every time I see a new naked little E-cab running around, I will throw a rap on it. We are invested in the E-cabs. It's a valuable resource to our visitors. So it's something we've always talked about ever since I was a little kid, is, you know, transportation to and from the places, this guy helps get it done. So we are an advocate for the E-cabs.
Speaking of advocacy, Visit Bastrop advocates on behalf of the travel industry for the city of Bastrop. We champion policies that are pro-growth, pro-competition, and pro-traveler. We just want to make sure that our businesses and leisure, I'm sorry, our tourism businesses are well-represented whenever necessary. If there's something coming up through legislature, then we work with the Texas Hotels and Lodging Association, and to make sure that our member partners are being heard. Okay, this is one of our new initiatives. We are, we have researched, and we have made it a goal to become a certified autism destination. And you may wonder, like, that's a pretty specific area. Why are we focusing there? We're focusing there because it's an underserved area, and it's an underserved area in a way that it's not just for autism, but there's other folks out there that look to communities that prioritize underserved sectors. So it could be somebody, instead of autism, it might be a different kind of group, but they're like, oh, they're autism-friendly, so they obviously understand what it's like to be, what, it's an important priority for them, if I'm explaining that properly.
Would that show up on their value graph?
Yes. And it will show up on their value graph. Basically, what we're going to do, we want to focus the, to make visitors with autism or sensory needs feel welcome, safe and have fun. And so that means that our tourism-related organizations will have completed autism and sensory advisory disorder sensitivity awareness training. And currently, there are no destinations within the state of Texas that are autism-certified. There are only attractions, such as Six Flags, the Houston Space Center, those types of things. And there's very few of those within the state of Texas as well. And there are no DMOs that are certified. So it's not only is the community, but there's also no DMO certified in the state of Texas. And so you might ask, well, why are we doing this? Autism travels has, there's a huge number with autism travel, and we are very well-positioned because of our outdoors and our open spaces for those travelers to come and be able to be themselves and feel very included here. Anybody, any location that has become autism-certified has seen increases in their return visits. Earned media value has gone way up. They have a positive media coverage, and their guest satisfaction scores have raised, have been raised. It's a very lengthy process, so it may take a little more than a year. I may not be able to be back here next year and say that we achieved it. We're going to try really hard. But I think it's, I mean, given our tagline is "Welcome to it all," this is an underserved area that we feel that Bastrop's really well-suited to address. Sustainable tourism, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's the buzzword out there. People want to be in a real sustainable place, and they want to know that when they come, that it is sustainable. We are looking at some, those tourism actions that we want, you know, folks to be able to do is shop sustainably at Bastrop's local businesses, sign the pledge, which I'll show you about, avoid using the single-use plastics, return maps, preserve our parks and natural areas. So we've developed the Be Kind Bastrop pledge that we will be rolling out this year, and it talks about basically leaving no trace, tread lightly, go beyond, think local, make an impact, spread kindness, plan, and be thoughtful, mindful. So we want to encourage our visitors to take care of Bastrop that we like, the way that we like to take care of Bastrop. So we will have a, a full initiative that will go out around this, this coming year. We worked with this, we had talked about doing this with the city last year at our last council meeting. The city's looking at something a little bit more detailed and five-years, a five-year plan. So we're just kind of kicking it off locally right now.
Susan didn't like "take your memories and your trash."
Any questions?
Reminded me, I'm asking Mr. Jobe, what's in the five-year plan?
Ms. Gleason mentioned that there was going to be a five-year sustainable plan for the city.
Oh, okay.
And we were talking about doing a tourism sustainability plan. So instead of waiting for, we'll partner with you on that, but instead of waiting for that, we just wanted to sort of get ahead of it a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. And so you'll know, I was just asking Mr. Jobe, you might check with Chief Nagy. I think our police officers go through training for, if they, if they are interacting with autism folks, to know how to interact with them. So that may be something that you'd want to leverage and tie off of.
Okay, any questions before we move into the budget? Okay, great. So this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to spend the money to do it, everything that we just mentioned. So we have our city contract, and as I mentioned, the hot special event funding is 75,000. So that's our total revenue. And then we break it out by these categories, client development, memberships, meeting, transportation, marketing and advertising, PR, and so on. As you, I don't need to read those, too, but there's our expenses. Couple of things that I will call to your attention is under personnel costs, we are, of course, adding another person, but we'd like to mention that health insurance has gone up 117%. So we have quite a rise in some cost there. Payroll taxes went up 27%. So even though, even though the payroll costs have gone, our personnel costs have gone up, we're, I think we're still at pretty, a pretty good balance with our marketing, advertising, and PR.
And is, does the marketing, advertising, the 477,000, is that where the hot special event funding is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's in there, though. Well, that's where we, that's where we put it. For the, this, yes.
Do you want to change, is that your final answer?
I think it is. Is it, is it my final answer?
Final answer.
All right. Let's see. So one of the things that we have under marketing, advertising, and PR that's exciting for this year, and we did not do a slide on it, but we are going to increase, we earmarked in our marketing budget for a research tool. We're five years old now, and we want to be able to invest in a, in a tool that tells us what we're doing, how we're doing overall, and where our biggest impact comes from. So we are investing in a company that is a state-of-the-art company for tourism and travel, and they will be able to tell us some things. It's a little creepy. But do travelers visit the same location in the destination that they researched on your website? How long does it take between site visits and visitations? What are the top converting pages on your website that they, and how do they change throughout the year? And then there's things like, you know, obviously, the real basic things, like how much money do they spend when they're here? How long were they in the Sugar Shack before they moved over to Neighbors? How long were they in Neighbors and then walked over to Old Town? So it, it's real-time data.
So Big Brother is watching.
Oh, this is huge.
Watching and counting and tracking is what you're telling us.
The frequency of the event data is every 24 hours. So if anybody wants to know where anyone is, I can help you. We're very excited about this research. It's going to really help our member partners with their business planning, to be able to understand who their guests are, and who, what, like, how many people are really here from out of town? How many people are really here from, that are local? I think Ashton shared, I'm going to ask her to share the story with you. I think this is probably the best story about how this research can work to its advantage.
We just went to TACBB, and we sat and listened to Zartico give a presentation, and it's just really cool. Like Susan said, all the things that they can do, and they, their city was having some parking issues, and they were convinced that it was the tourists that were taking up their parking spots. And so they did a survey and a study, and they found out it was their locals that were hanging out in the parking lot.
Was it their local employees of the?
Probably.
Yeah, there you go.
Probably. So it's just, you know, it's, it's very, it's a very robust tool, and it can, it can do a lot of things. We see a lot of use in our events, and a lot of our data comes from our website, so it's nice to have another data point.
And we'll be able to share that data with our partners as well.
Just because I'm curious, what does a tool like that cost?
Initially, 25,000.
So what category do you consider? Is that also a part of your marketing?
That's undermarketing. Yes, ma'am. Undermarketing, advertising, and PR.
Very interesting, and certainly helpful to drive the return and for you to know if things are paying off or not.
Well, we have, you know, we have a very strong KPI when we have sales results, right? Because we have a signed contract. So, and we do have marketing KPIs, and we can measure website traffic. But let's just see, let's learn more about our visitors. Where are they coming from? How long are they staying? Is it because of us that they came here?
Just for curiosity, and I keep looking to see, I'm not meaning to be the only one asking questions. What's client development?
Client development is, okay, this was, if we have a client that comes in, and it's a conference, it's not an event for the 75,000 hot fund, okay? And they want to bring a meeting to the Hyatt, just as an example. And the Hyatt is, gives them a quote, and they say, well, we think that the, this actually happened, this is a true story, the AV is too high. And so we can help offset those AV costs if it means that they will come and book their meeting here. In this particular instance, we had that happen, and we said, we will do this. We will help comp, you know, we will pay for the AV charges, which, of course, we negotiated lower. And we will do that, but you have to sign a two-year agreement. So they came for two years. It was quite a large group. Keith, this was before your time. Quite a large group that came. They utilized the convention center for an off-site dinner, and they were at the Hyatt. And so that's the fund that we, that's what we use that for. Or if we have a meeting planner coming into town, and we want to take them to dinner and show them around, that would come from that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
On that new program that you're looking, you're purchasing, so how did they get that data? I mean, like the cell phones?
Some of it's cell phones, some of it's credit cards. Yes.
Just curious.
I can give you more information about it. We haven't signed the agreement yet with them. So, but yes, it's cell phones, it's credit card data.
I just was, for anybody watching, you guys went out spying on everybody. Just curious. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions about our budget? And we get this number from Tracy mid-year.
Oh, I had another question, if that was all right.
Absolutely.
On your dues and subscriptions, I hope that you, you meet up with the city at one point to make sure that we're not both getting a subscription somewhere, for this department to get a subscription, and you have it. You know, I know that we're a good team, so we can, you know, just because you have it, I'm sure you would share that information if we asked, or?
Absolutely. And I'll be happy to go over this with Ms. Gleason and for the upcoming year. And we're happy to share wherever we can our login information and-
No, we just, you know, both hands. Don't realize the other one's spending it, and this one's spending it, too, or something.
Absolutely.
Leverage all those tax dollars we can.
And I do think you're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you. Okay.
Council, that's $1.2 million. No questions? Councilmember Kirkland?
The, the IT budget looks pretty bare bones. You have a new employee coming on, they get a computer. You should probably replace things maybe once every three years, along those lines. Is that number high enough?
Actually, it is. Yeah, we, we also work with HIMI, and we work with the city to get our equipment. So we're getting them at, you know, a fairly good rate. But some of the equip, most of the equipment is either really new, that we've already had to replace in previous years, and we have extras due to employees exiting. So, yeah, I'm pretty confident with that.
They get to leverage the buyboard stuff that we get as well. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I have some questions, and I'm not sure if this is exactly the right place to ask it or not. On your marketing thing, I know that I used, I'm not the liaison to Main Street, whatever his name is.
Councilmember Crouch.
That's him. I'm sorry, his name, sorry, Jimmy. So I'm sure you guys meet together, because I know that Main Street was looking at some branding, but you've branded, branded the city quite extensively. So you guys all work together to make sure we're not coming up with two different ideas and things.
We're going to, we will discuss that a little bit in the upcoming slides, if you're okay with that.
Yep, I'm fine. I just want to make sure that it was going to be asked. And the other question, my brain is just gone, because I don't remember now. I'll have to ask that in a minute, when I remember.
We will allow. Great questions, guys.
Councilwoman Plunkett?
And I don't know if this was the right place to ask this, but, you know, it's, it's in here. Last year and the year before, I mean, there was some concern about the Calahari Resort really, you know, taking a lot out of the Hyatt. My understanding is that the Hyatt is doing really well this year. I just wanted to, you know, get some feedback as far as how do we feel like- do we feel like that Calahari has, and I think in the other resort type hotels that have been opened over the past, you know, couple of years. Has the market just grown enough or is everybody finding a place? I'd just like to hear some comment on, you know, some post, you know, numbers.
I'm gonna say yes, yes and yes. And then I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Spenden from the Hyatt.
We, we don't consider Calahari a direct competitor. Their markets are much different. The type of group that they attract is much different than anything we see. And we have no evidence to support any of our groups or our typical groups going there. Our greater competitors are the top few that were listed on the earlier slide. That's who we look to. From a transient perspective, again, it's a different, it's a different experience. What we offer down the road here versus their indoor water park theme. And, you know, quite frankly, in recent years, our rates have gone up to a level that perhaps some of their guests would not be able to afford to join us. There, there's plenty of business.
So what, what do you think the, what's the threat that you're concerned about from either the hotel's standpoint or from, from the tourism standpoint? What's the biggest competitor? What's the toughest challenge ahead of you?
Not having enough hotels, honestly.
We need more rooms.
We need more rooms. That's our biggest challenge.
Would you like one across the street?
Could you please?
All righty.
Okay, great questions. Any other questions on this before we move on? Okay, we're almost done. Yay. Okay, moving along to the accolades. So I want to share with our new council members that, you know, we had a fantastic year last year. But also some of the things that we've accomplished in previous years. I just want to share those with you and let you know that, you know, we became a music-friendly community designate, that we were community-designated music-friendly. We took third place in 2019 for a co-op, co-op advertising program. And then in 2021, we took first place in advertising and marketing for Bastrop County's Best. So there's some of the logos there and some of the things that we have achieved in the past. Oh, no, that's not the right one. Nope. No? Nope. Okay, go back to that one. Okay, so, sorry, sorry. So as you know, destinations, international accreditation, with distinction, happened this year. And we are so excited about that, right? That was one of our, the highlights of our year. And, but what some of you don't know, or actually may, or may not remember, well, before I say that, we're gonna share a little success, sweetness of success with you over our accreditation. But what some of you may not know is that on August 13th of 2020, I made a promise to city council. Go ahead, Colin.
Yes, definitely quality. And we are going for, there's regular certification, but we're going for certification with honors.
Great.
So, you got that on video, right?
Outstanding, thank you.
Hold me to that one. Think that's a.
And I did it, or we did it. I didn't, I did not do it. We did it. Sorry. So being a woman of my word, we accomplished that. So I just wanted to share that with all of you. However.
How many accredited DMOs are there in the state of Texas?
Oh, in the state of Texas?
Or what, or the nation? How many, what's a, a number that you know?
With distinction, what was that number? There was 16? Out of 300?
16 out of 300 and you are one of them?
Yes, ma'am.
We, you deserve another round of applause.
And this, we all came together as quite a team during that process. It was very good team building as well.
Yeah, your team should be really, really proud of that accomplishment. Congratulations to each of you.
So we didn't stop there. Last week, the team went to Padre, South Padre. And while they were there, we picked up a few awards. We picked up first place for leisure tourism campaign, first place for local community initiative, and first place for public relations campaign. And we were the only DMO to receive three first place.
In our budget category.
In our budget category in the state of Texas.
Congratulations.
Do we get another cookie?
I just am so blessed with. Yeah, but wait. We just have a phenomenal team and everybody, very dedicated to Bastrop and very dedicated to their work. And I think the grin on Ashton's face just says it all right there. So.
They were hard to hold.
They were what?
They were hard to hold.
So they just got back on Friday and if you drive by the office, you'll see I put up a banner for them that says, welcome back award-winning team. So that's hanging outside. Anyway. That's all I have. I wanted to leave this on a good note before we move into, not that considerations will be a bad note, but before we move into future planning, this is sort of what we've been up to.
Congratulations again. I mean, it's just outstanding and what a great way to recognize your team.
It's, it's really nice as well to have them be there and to be able to hear their name called three times in front of their counterparts. And first place, it's, it's really a nice feeling. So we, this is the time of the year that we bring to you our considerations that we'd like to talk about, that may or may not have an effect on our contract. And, you know, just things we just sort of want to talk about, like maybe we should think about for the upcoming year. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson Rogers, the city branding and marketing is one thing that we do want to talk about, as you mentioned. We, we have done extensive research in Bastrop and, and around the branding and we, and we market that. It would be great from our eyes that what we tell our visitors and what we show our visitors visually, they are able to see that when they come into the area. Right now, they don't see that. So I, I would like to work with the city a little bit more on how we can maybe get those offers, those things to work together. I think Ashton, can, why don't you go ahead and explain that?
I mean, I think you did a great job, you know, but we, we work so hard to be a very visible resource to people who aren't here, you know, because they're our number one audiences. Getting people who don't live here to come visit here. And so we are the face, the visuals that they see whenever they are potentially looking to come visit us. And we also want them to feel that attachment to our brand when they're actually here with us. As well as our community members, we want the community to have the attachment to the brand as well. So we, we'd like to work on making that visual connection with the city for our marketing efforts. That's one thing.
So before we get past that, I think that's an excellent idea. Does anybody have a problem with that? Councilmember Plunkett?
No, I've been saying that for a while now. It doesn't, it makes no sense. I mean, that, that was the point of this organization, I thought, was to be the brand manager and to be the, you know, the, the voice, you know, for the city. And that may require a little bit of tweaking of some, you know, things that we're doing internally with the city. But I, I just don't see the point in multiple messages like that.
Yeah, I, I agree. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
And I agree totally with Kevin. And that's kind of where I was asking that question, only because I had sat on that team also. Because it is important. I mean, you see a Nike shoe, they don't even have to put their name, you just see that check mark. Yeah, something. And so that's, that's what's important about the branding. If, and if we're all doing something different, then none of the branding is gonna work. So that's kind of why I was asking that question about that. And if I could ask the other question, go back to your budget, but I remembered my question. When you brought up the, the Main Street is part of your website now?
Yes, ma'am.
So my question being is that, I know that must be another cost on you, but.
It is a cost of resources, yes.
So, but it's not increased in your contract, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if you went back to slide 36, I think this, I, I have a reason. Yep, page 36, slide 36.
Is it the value?
There we go. So on that picture of Carrie Fossler that she won't admit to, in that upper left-hand corner, that could be your logo with downtown in the middle of your, is that what we're talking about? Or is, because that, that logo is not a part of when I go to your website and it flips through everything, that's not one of them. So is that the kind of stuff that we're talking about for consistency?
Yes. And we have talked about this in the past with Main, you know, with Main Street. And in the past was the feeling that Main Street really needed to stand on their own. And we're not looking to control this in any way, shape or form. We just, we're marketers, we're experts at what we do and we feel that the, that we need to visualize our brand.
Well, I feel like we don't need to make the sausage right now, but I, I hear counsel saying, have the conversation. And, and let the groups sit down together and, you know, come up with a plan. Is that, counsel, is that where you are, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Well, it's kind of like the same reason we give them the 75,000.
They're the experts.
They're the experts of it. That's what we pay them to do. Let's let them do that job.
Well, and there's plenty of grace to say, there's lots of, lots of activities on Main Street. And, and to your point, they, that's a national organization. They've got some rules and regulations, not trying to step on any toes. But if we can leverage things, it would seem, why would we not want to leverage some of those things? And I don't know whose toes I'm stepping on, so I'm trying to not look at every, anybody. But it bothers me that when I am driving across the bridge, that it says y'all come back as if at the end of the bridge, you, you are now not a part of Bastrop anymore. And because right across that bridge is a business on the right that I like to frequent. Yeah. So, and I, you know, I appreciate that our stuff, you know, the bridge maybe is not exactly where everyone would like it to be. But that, to me, from a marketing standpoint, it's like that seems to be contrary to our conversation about, one of the reasons that we went after the RACE grant for the bridge was that we were trying to unite and that it's both sides of the river are all a part of Bastrop. And that's why our chestnut, you know, which when we talk to Tech Dot is Loop 150, we're going from 71 to 95 because it's that whole, whole breadth is a part of our, our city. So I, if, if, and I want to be clear about what the ask is, if the ask is, we would like to have the conversation, I would say counsel saying yes, please have the conversation. Our new city manager starts on October 3rd, but I'm certain that, given what counsel's saying tonight, Mr. Jobe's more than prepared to start the conversations and, you know, lay out what next steps are. So I don't think you, to Mayor Pro Tem Rogers' point, counsel's not the expert on this. You don't want us micromanaging this. But yes, please have the conversation. Counsel wants you to leverage every dollar that you possibly can.
And we want to be an asset. We don't need to duplicate efforts, just like membership is, and subscriptions. We don't need to duplicate the efforts. If we can help out on the marketing of the city, then more time for you guys to do other things.
And, and Main Street as well, that is a dynamic, overworked, phenomenal committee and organization. And if, if you can be an asset and that allows them to work on some other things, that's just all, all the better for everyone. So. Counsel, everybody okay with that? All right. Okay, what's your next ask?
The next is, there's not an issue here at all. It's just awareness and involvement, again, of visit Bastrop and what we bring to the table. And we just want to reinforce that as, as, as a city, as you're planning and you're doing placemaking, that you consider tourism as an audience for that placemaking. We know what our visitors want and what they need. And so if Main Street and other organizations are looking at the future of, you know, should we have purple benches or black benches or blue benches or something like that, we're not, we don't want to get into that. But we'd like to be at the table to talk about the tourism audience and bring those audiences.
I would think our parks master plan, are you guys already planning on being a part of that? Because I would think for the autism as well, I would think that's involved in outdoors and with the parks. And what a great time to get input for that. And the city could get, perhaps go after grants that have special accommodations at some of our parks to help with the certification. There seems to be a lot to leverage in that. So.
Yes, agree. That's exactly why we're bringing it up. Lastly is to, I don't know if we need to do anything with this, but our agreement to the business plan deliverable is to achieve our accreditation. Do we just leave that in there or does it need to come out or in our city agreement?
It needs to, you don't want it to just go away, but you gotta get some sort of like done, nanny, nanny, boobop, we did it or something, right? I mean, it needs to be acknowledged.
We have to be re-accredited within three years. So we could maybe put some language in there.
Yeah, maybe we say achieved on so-and-so date and that the goal is to maintain accreditation.
Right.
Okay. So I can work with Trey or Mr. Jobe or Ms. Gleason?
Yep, Mr. Jobe's your best first stop.
Okay, great. And then lastly, which is not up there, is, want to talk again about the timing of this meeting. Mayor, you spoke to me prior to the meeting and I actually had it on the agenda as well to talk about. Do you want to take the lead on this one?
Yeah, I actually want to ask Mr. Jobe if he wants to chime in because we talked about, we want to do it at a time that it makes sense and there, it's, I don't know if you have thoughts about that from the, from a, from the budget process? When's the best time to maybe do that or? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, so I think what we talked about in general this afternoon was just maybe reschedule the meeting because this is such a busy time of year. September, bringing the budget on. Also, it says, I think it says August-ish or something like that in the contract.
Right.
Maybe that's not the exact language, but just reconsidering when that might happen. Maybe it's early in, earlier in the year. I don't know, you have a mid-year update?
Yeah, let me share with you what our restrictions are.
When do we tru-up? Is it March? End of March?
I think the check, it comes around March, April, April.
Okay.
That's the tru-up from the year before. So we can't begin our planning until we have our budgetary number from Ms. Waldron. So once we have that, then we can review all these contracts, all these other agreements, you know, like we want to do this, this year and we want to do that this year. So we can't really put together a plan until we know what that number is. And then once we have a plan, we take it to our board of directors, they vote on it. And then I also leave a monthly way just in case there's something they want us to change. So we have about two months in there of, of that time. I'm not saying it can't be done. I just want you to, so what we bring to the table is we have to have a solid number and then we have to be able to build a plan around that.
Well, it all, and there we are on the circle of life, right? Because Ms. Waldron can't get a final number till she gets a final number from the appraisal district. And the appraisal district has statutory dates that they have to do the final number. So.
Well, she gives us her forecast in June.
Yeah, so I'm thinking maybe that's the time to have the meeting. And, and it's before some of those final conversations. So we, and we don't have to decide right now, but you're, you know, you're talking to a council that in less than seven days is setting a tax rate and adopting a budget. So if we made any major changes tonight, Ms. Waldron would just, and her team, they would not be happy campers and I would not blame them.
What if we?
But how much, how many times do we actually change something major?
Not in this, not on this night.
And so is it better to have the conversation when, you know, like after the tru-up, if it, if that's a March, we have our very first budget discussions in May and we're having those before we know what the final budgets are. But we start giving staff direction of, that's not a priority. These are our top eight priorities. That's number eight if we can't afford it. So we can have some broadband, you know, high-level conversations, which is probably all you really want to have with us anyway.
And there, there may be an opportunity for some of the budget workshops to present your plan. And then the tru-up when we close out the budget, say October, November.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I think, you know, given my, you know, experience on both sides, it seems to me like it would make sense, really kind of anytime after tru-up would make sense to me because, I mean, we're not changing your budget because, you know, we have a contract. So it is what it is in terms of, you know, you're getting your budget really from Tracy and her, and her, her forecast. Just, you know, just like we do on, on the revenue side. So it seems to me like it would make more sense at that point. Cause you're gonna, at that point, see, you know, whether you owe or whether, you know, whether you were owed or whether you owe. whether you were owed or whether you owe. And, you know, so are you making up a deficit? Are you spending, are you spending some extra?
Yeah, I think probably we should take this back because the purpose of this meeting is to tell you how we're going to spend the money in the upcoming year, which is part of our, which is what our agreement states we need to do. So, what we, another suggestion, we don't have to do, solve this tonight, but another suggestion is we do our annual review in October, where we tell you everything at the end of the year. We could roll those two into one in October. We'd already have our budget number. We've already gone through all of, all of the board approvals and everything else. And the numbers anyway that we look at, we, we're talking about last year's numbers compared to where we are this year. We'll have a full fiscal year under our belts. That would be a solution that we, I think we could talk about. So, I guess I could get together with...
Again, that's with Mr. Jobe and we can make a revision to the contract if we need to. And I would also like to suggest that, you know, they start their, council starts their budget discussions in May. And we normally do that in the middle of May. And that's because by then they have council for the next year. And for Visit Bastrop to be included on that agenda, it would give you an opportunity of, hey, we've just gotten our true-up. We're thinking about doing this new thing. We're thinking that the $75,000, we spent $98,000 last year. We had to come for a budget amendment. We'd like to just, we think we should right now be planning for $100,000 right now. We could have those kind of preliminary discussions in, in May when we can include it in the budget and actually make some changes in, in a timely manner. Because Ms. Waldron and her team do an excellent job, but things don't have to be final, final, final. Back to Councilmember Plunkett's point, we've got the contract. We're going to true-up. You know how we're calculating the number.
Right, right. And we're out of COVID, so it's not... Yeah, absolutely. We'll have that. I'm not married to this presentation and this date at all, so.
It's excellent information. I just, if there's ideas that we could bounce off of each other that might impact, more easily impact your planning going forward. We want to be an asset and not a, oh, gosh, we have to go tell them something. You know, it's, that's not...
Absolutely. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I was thinking that would be an excellent time because in that pre-budget meetings when we're, we're telling the city manager what our wishes are, not that we're going to get them, but that would be a good time for you to say what your wishes are. You know, so they can say, okay, you, you might get half of that, but...
Yeah, and that joint conversation might move something up the list if it, you know, if it checks off more boxes.
I was going to say it's also an opportunity to find those leveraging opportunities early before the budget's established. And so, it's done at one time, yeah.
Yeah. All right, you and I shall meet.
All right. Anything else?
That's it?
That's it? Mr. Dickey, that's it?
Well...
Oh, no. Oh, wait. Now we, now we're going to Tom's List, so.
No, Tom's List is really, it's a pretty short list because while the organization has done some really miraculous, spectacular things this year and they've been recognized for that, I also want to shout out, you know, if you look behind me and you look at this group of characters that we call our board of directors, the representation here for this community is absolutely spectacular. From, you know, in the hospitality field, we have, you know, the, the largest player. We have, you know, a very quaint hospitality Airbnb represented. We have the outdoor assets, whether it's LCRA, Parks and Recreation are represented. And we also have emerging, what we consider to be kind of that canary in the mine, where we have the, the real estate field represented, right? What's, what's that value proposition or whatever it is that we're calling this new?
Value graphic.
Oh, value graphic, yeah. For some of us dinosaurs, and I'm not sure that's always going to resonate. But, you know, what does it look like for the people who are moving to the community? And then we have, you know, for example, film is now being represented in the type of people who are going to come as a result of the film studios that are being repurposed or emerging. The point being is that I think when this organization started a number of years ago, it was very purposefully looked at, let's have these pillars of, you know, these different venues, these different interest areas, let's have them represented. I think what you have now is that you have really strong members of the community who have stepped forward. You know, just recently, BISD, Dr. Lee have come forward and joined this organization. And, you know, how does that fit into tourism? But part of it is, as you look at our expanded, how do we engage with the community? The, the people that make up this board, I would really put against any other board that serves this community. It is very well-rounded, is out on the edges, it's leading edge. And the type of information that we're able to collect and distill and give to Susan and her team, I think is part of the, the quality in is quality out. And, and I just, you know, this is my opportunity to give a shout-out to the people who donate their time, even when they don't have it. They're double-booked, they're triple-booked, but they still find a way to come in and to participate and add significant value. And I think that the council is a beneficiary to that. And I think that this community is a beneficiary of that. And now, Tom's stuff.
Well said.
Very well said. Thank you, Tom.
And certainly appreciate the board volunteering their time. It is a labor of love, for sure. I appreciate the fact that Ms. Smith and her team make sure that we all stay legal. The, the hot funds, they are a very unique little caterpillar of legislative funds. And the, the fact that you guys have done so great with, I calculated it was, I got a 14.3 multiplier on the investment. That is phenomenal. Anybody would like to have that. And shout-out to your board and a reminder to council, this is a board that I don't appoint and you don't confirm. They are, they stand on their own, they have their own nominating process. And that was not an accident. That was very much by design and just really speaks to the excellence of the community and of your board. So, thank you all very, very much for your time. Councilmember Crouch?
I just kind of wanted to echo what Tom was saying about the community and really not just this board, but the Parks Board, BEDC, Main Street. There's just so many people and a lot of them are on multiple boards. And, and it's just, it's great for the community to have all those people coming together and just sitting in this room like this and, and doing the best thing for the city of Bastrop. So, it's, it's nice to see this group and all the other groups together making Bastrop an award-winning city in a lot of ways. So, thank you all for this very detailed report and, and for your time to give it to us today.
Excellent. All right, council, we're moving on to item number four. I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. It is 6:17 and City Council is adjourned. Mr. Dickey, would you like to adjourn your Visit Bastrop Board?
Yes, and Visit Bastrop will entertain a motion to adjourn our joint meeting with the City Council. I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any foes? Carries?
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job.